We have to call the City of Elkhorn Common Council, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, five-thirty meeting to order. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in whose name we will declare our own.
Roll call, please.
Bruce Lechner.
Here.
Tim Sharoda.
Here.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Here.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Here.
Scott McClory is absent. Ken Minell.
Here.
Carol Young.
Here.
Moving on to public comment. Anybody here for public comment tonight? Since there's no one here for public comment, move on to the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes of common council, May first, twenty twenty-three, Human Resource Committee, May eighth, twenty twenty-three, Finance and Judicial Committee, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. We have the Babe Man Park Shelter Pay Request, number seven, for sheer construction, an engagement agreement with Carls and Brady LLP to serve as a bond counsel for four million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, City of Elkhorn General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, Series twenty twenty-three A. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
You have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any question or discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for all the items on the consent agenda. Next, we have consideration and recommendation to pay the City of Elkhorn bills at two million, six hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-eight cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay bills.
We have a motion to approve and pay the bills. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on any of the bills in your packet? Roll call, please.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Yes.
Motion passed to pay the bills. Next, reported city officers. Mayor, I want to thank Chief Christiansen for bringing this my attention, but today is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, with along as National Police Week. National Peace Officers Memorial Day was established in nineteen sixty-two by President Kennedy to recognize law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. I would like to remember Officer Hans Lindstrom of the Elkhorn Police Department, who was killed in the line of duty on June thirteenth, nineteen twenty-seven. Supposedly he pulled the car over and ended up getting shot for some... Is that true, Chief?
It is true.
Yep. Didn't know any reason, but we did find out later that they had just robbed?
Yeah, they just burglarized a lake house and unbeknownst to him, and was shot after the traffic stop.
So that was in June thirteenth, nineteen twenty-seven. Also, I'd like to note that this year, Wisconsin has already lost the lives of four officers, and regarably only the state of Louisiana has lost more officers to date this year. I would like to recognize the four officers in Wisconsin. Deputy Sheriff Katie Lysling with the St. Croix County Sheriff's Department, Officer Emily Ann Breidenbach from the Chatek Police Department, Officer Hunter Timothy Shield from the Cameron Police Department, and Officer Peter E.C. Gerbing from the Milwaukee Police Department. Again, I'd like to thank the police chief and all the police staff for all the great work they do in the City of Elkhorn. So, thank you, Chief. Next, Adam?
So, a lot going on at the city. Last, May third, we had the Joint Review Board met to talk about the proposed project plan amendment. They made a recommendation to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission approved the proposed changes with some recommended changes that the Joint Review Board wanted to be made. The Planning Commission then had their public hearing on May fourth, and they did make a recommendation to approve... They made a recommendation to the council to approve the proposed project plan amendment with the changes recommended by the Joint Review Board. So, council, you'll see that proposed project plan amendment at the first meeting in June, and then the Joint Review Board is scheduled to meet in mid-June, June twentieth, to have their final vote on it, assuming the council approves it. So, definitely a lot going on with the JRB right now, JRB in the Tid District. We had a meeting, actually, with Joe Murray from Ellers, along with Brian Reimer, talked about applying to potentially have water rates adjusted here in the city, which is not something that's happened since two thousand seventeen. So, that's a process we're working on, and would have to be done by the end of July. So, it's a priority for us, and the plan is that Ellers will be back to do a presentation in July. I don't know if Joe's trying to hide behind the... No, I guess not, okay. But they should be coming to do a presentation on their preliminary findings and recommendations in July. And then, Board of You is meeting on Wednesday at five-thirty, and if you have questions, I guess you can talk to Lacy about that, but that is on, like I said, Wednesday at five-thirty for people who are appealing their assessments. Just wanted to thank Chris at the chamber, the picnic they had last week, golf tournament was really successful. I know Carl golfed and I ate, so I think I had the better of the two options, but I'm just... But everything was really, really great, Chris. I mean, I wasn't expecting, you know, a steak dinner with all the fixings, so that was really, really nice. So, and those were my updates, except for I'm just going to defer to Matt. I know he's got some updates on some of the street projects are kicking off.
Yeah, last week, Thursday, we met with stakeholders, property owners, business owners along East Centralia Street. Friday, they did some saw cutting, and today they actually closed the roadway, so that project is under construction now. That's from Lincoln Street to just east of the Interstate U for forty-three. So, there's no detour setup, but the roadway is closed to through traffic, and that was posted on our Facebook page, as far as how to get to the compost using Getson Street. Wright Street, I handed out resident letters today, and they're looking to get started on the south face of that project, south of Geneva Street, next week, Monday. Market Street's the third project. That one won't kick off until later, later in June, after school gets out.
I guess one final thing I just would add is, we did get some good news about the Vibrant Spaces grant application. We were awaiting a press release, which has not yet happened, so I'm going to defer to Katie on what she wants to say about that. The council is aware of the item on the agenda for tonight, but other than that, I don't know what all you want to say. So, we will defer to Katie on that.
Okay. Thank you, Adam and Matt. Next, reported city boards and community partners. Fire advisory? Nothing? Nope. Move on to the next meeting, right, Rod?
Yeah, you were there.
No quorum, correct. Library board?
I'm going to defer to Chad. He's here tonight.
Good evening. The Matheson Memorial Library is proud to announce that it has been selected as a recipient of the Gage Marine one-hundred-and-fiftieth Anniversary Grant. This grant, along with matching funds from the Friends of the Matheson Memorial Library and the Library Foundation, will allow the library to construct a new youth services desk/service area that will greatly increase storage and efficiency for youth services, as well as make the department more attractive inviting for years to come. Representatives from library staff, friends, and the foundation will accept this award at the Gage Marine Anniversary Celebration on Thursday, May eighteenth. And our community read will be unveiled on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, by Mayor Lechner himself. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Recreation advisory?
Yep. Our next park and rec board meeting is on June fourteenth at five-thirty at the Babe Man Park Shelter.
Thank you.
It looks like you haven't said a "I" that says yet.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce. Chris, give it to Chris.
Well, at least I don't have... That's my high mastermind. As Adam said, last Wednesday, we had our annual golf outing. We had a hundred and thirty-six golfers, which is a large amount for us. Thank you, Ken, for attending with him and his boys. And then Adam and Carl joined us also at some point. We also had a hundred and seventy people for dinner, and we did our annual awards and presented them to some of our partners. One of the biggest ones is we wanted to recognize J. Roberts Menswear, Kyle Desner and his family, for some out-of-the-box thinking that they have done, and the changes that they have made to the store and the expansion. Don't know if everybody knows, but you know, J. Roberts has been a staple here in Elkhorn, very successful, and Kyle was a young entrepreneur who's bought it and has expanded into Lake Geneva and Janesville, and is, as he puts it, rocking it. So, we're very happy to continue to see him stay in Elkhorn, because he has been... A lot of area have been trying to lure them over there. So, and he has his roots here. He wants to stay here. So, this weekend, if you're bored or would like to eat until you're full, come and join us down at Veterans Park. We will have twenty-one different food trucks, starting from the corner of Court and Church at the top by the police department, starting there, going down Church Street, and then on the Waller Street, they park parallel in the parking spots and face into the park. We have music from eleven to one and one to three, and then we have vendors, about seventy-five different vendors, in the opposite side of the park. So, and the weather says seventy-two and partly sunny. So, and then after that, the following weekend, we start kick off our Saturdays on the square from eight to one every Saturday on, which would be the west-east side of Veterans Park or the Wisconsin Street side. And we have about twenty to thirty vendors, depending on the week. So, our summer officially kicks off this week. So, if you have any questions or concerns, let us know, but we're here to try to bring locals and visitors to Elkhorn.
Thank you, Chris. Next, community grant writer. Katie, welcome.
Well, as you all know, I've been in the position for eight months now, and if you would have asked me about three weeks ago how it was going, I would say nerve-wracking, a lot of writing, but not a lot of results. And then about two weeks ago, I became a million-dollar baby. I brought in a little over a million dollars in grant funding to the City of Elkhorn, mostly through the school district. I worked with the team to continue the Youth Build Construction Project, which is a three-year one. We were one of twenty-five school districts in the country to win the Department of Energy Clean Conservation Class Prize, and we won the library desk. We won some funds for Chris, which we'll talk about a little bit tonight, but we are a flagship recipient of the first grant with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation as well. I want to thank you all so much for your support, especially Chief Christiansen and Mayor Reynolds, because I have emailed you continuously asking for, can you just write this letter and say that you think this is a good idea to bring into our community? And I know that those types of levels of support really help boost applications to show community interest and participation in the City of Elkhorn. I am currently working on another seven projects for the city and the school district and the Chamber of Commerce. If you have any interest or anything that you would like investigated, I'm more than happy to do so. I've already done it for some community residents and organizations that are looking to bring in additional funds to Elkhorn, and I've really enjoyed the job so far. You can get your fingers into a lot of different what-ifs or what great ideas we can bring into Elkhorn. So, it's been a great opportunity, and I thank you all for your help. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Next, committee reports. Human Resources?
Yeah. Okay, we met on May eighth, and we talked about... We had a discussion and possible decision regarding police association request to increase the HRA benefit amounts. Okay, are we voting on that, or do we... Am I just...
You just give them the report.
Just give them the report. Okay, good. Okay. And we had a discussion regarding allocation of duties in the Administration and Finance Department, and replacement of... Can I say that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Replacement of the vacant treasurer position.
Yeah, that one's on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Financial and judicial, I know Scott's not here, so I think Ken and Tim are going to take it.
We had a meeting last week, and there was two things on the agenda, and we voted to move both of those forward. I'll take the first one, and I think Tim's going to take the second one. It was a decision regarding an ARPA funds and make those available for the Water Department on some of the projects that they're currently working on, and we made a motion to move that forward and second it.
I think that's also on the agenda.
And if Adam maybe wants to explain a little bit about that fund, let's see.
Sure. So, the city received our ARPA funds a couple of years ago, and we received a little more than a million, and since then, we still have about seven hundred and eighty thousand. So, we're looking to, as Alderman Minell said, to have those available for the Water Department for maintaining the water supply.
The second item we discussed at the meeting was some water department projects that are taking or just starting now for twenty twenty-three, two-point-five million in projects. Some of that money is coming back to the city through DNR funding, but we need some, I guess, short-term funding for those. The city's got to lay out the money first. So, after discussion, rather than borrow the money and pay interest, an option was presented to do an inter-fund loan, and a motion was made and seconded and passed to borrow one-point-two-five million from both the electric and the sewer funds as a stopgap method, I guess.
Which you'll be voting on tonight, too.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, guys. Next, moving on to new business. First, discussion and possible decision regarding proposed Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen, a resolution awarding the sale of four million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, Series twenty twenty-three A. Joe can update the council. He had the opening bids this morning, and it was actually some good news, so.
Good evening. I'm Joe Murray from Ellers, proud to be the city's financial advisor. I believe you all have a copy of the sale day report. Hand it out. Yes, we did receive very good news on your behalf today. We accepted bids at ten-thirty this morning. You received seven bids from underwriters, which shows that there were a lot of firms that were interested in buying the debt from the city. And also, the good news is that all the bids came in well underneath the projections that we had. So, I'll talk about the savings, what that really means for you, and the good news on that. The other thing I wanted to highlight and included in one of the many pages in the sale day report is, we went through a rating process. We went to Moody's and got a credit rating before going to market. Please let you know that your double-A-three rating was affirmed, which is the fourth highest rating that you can get. It's a very good rating for a community of your size. Better the rating, the lower the interest rates. But with a double-A-three, that's a very good sign, and you should be proud of that. And the report is included as part of the sale day report, if you want to read more information about that. The low bid came in from the Baker Group, an underwriter out of Oklahoma City. The final true interest cost came in at three-point-five-nine-four-six percent. We had projected it would come in at four-point-eleven percent, so it's basically sixty basis points lower than we had projected. What does that mean? The good news is that you're going to save a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in interest cost associated with the borrowing. The financing plan also anticipated utilizing eighty thousand dollars of cash on hand to help support your street projects, but the way the bids came in, you only need to provide twenty thousand dollars. So, the net savings to the city is roughly just under two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, based on the results we received today. The other good thing, we had projected that the tax impact for the borrowing at the higher interest rate was going to mean a twenty-one cent increase in your debt service tax levy, tax rate for next year. Based on the bids we received, it's only going to go up nine cents. So, good news, I think, all the way around. Like I said, there's a lot of information included in the sale day report. I can get into as much detail as you'd like, but that's kind of the highlights of the good news.
Council members, any questions for Joe?
Just glad it came in at nine cents. I'm happy with that.
Good news. Any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Resolution twenty-three seventeen?
That is correct.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Motion passed for Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen. Thank you, Joe. Next, discussion of possible decision regarding proposed Resolution twenty-three dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing inter-fund loans from electric fund and sewer fund to water fund. This was just talked about that Tim brought up.
Yeah, I move we approve Resolution twenty-three eighteen.
We have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three eighteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash eighteen was approved. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding proposed Resolution twenty-three dash nineteen, a resolution approving the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the city water system operations. Ken just talked about this. That was in committee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve twenty-three nineteen resolution. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on Resolution twenty-three dash nineteen? Roll call, please.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Motion passed for Resolution twenty-three dash nineteen. Discussion and possible decision regarding proposed agreement between the City of Elkhorn and the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for the use of the Vibrant Spaces Grant Funds in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Everybody seen that in their packet? Do I have any questions or discussion, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the proposed agreement. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for the proposed agreement for the Vibrant Spaces Grant Funds. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding partnering with Alliant Energies on the One Million Trees Initiative. Everybody seen that in their packet?
Any question to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for partnering with Alliant Energies on the One Million Trees Initiative. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding the purchase of a CSO vehicle for the police department. Everybody seen chief's memo in the packet explaining? Any questions for the chief on that?
Just confirming we do have the funds available.
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the purchase of a CSO vehicle for the police department? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Motion passed for the purchase of the CSO vehicle to the police department. Discussion and possible decision regarding the HVAC, annual maintenance, and executing a one-year contract with Western Mechanical. They've been in the past, and I think this is a renewal, correct, Adam? I'm going to defer to Matt on this one.
Yeah, we've been working with Weston for HVAC services since I've been here, so at least five years, maybe closer to ten, more than that. So, last year, no, not last year, the year before last, I went out and searched and got quotes from a couple of the folks that had worked on our DPW facility, and the prices came back in extremely higher than what we currently have for Weston. But I know that there had been some concerns about some of the projects that were going on with Weston. I think it's gotten better in the last year, but I know there's been hiccups in the last year as well. So, if you guys would like, I could try to explore getting more bids. Prior to, two years ago, since I've been here, we haven't been able to get bids, but I could certainly try to get some more. But the prices that we got were almost double what we were getting from Weston.
What type of hiccups?
That's what I was going to ask. Can you explain what some of the hiccups may be? Is it communication, or is it not getting...
Joe, can you help me out on this one?
Not getting things done?
I know there's specific issues at the police department with, where something was out of warranty, or they were waiting out of part.
We had several issues with our boiler that we ended up having to actually replace the boiler, and obviously, a new boiler should last more than ten years since we moved it. I think some of those problems were associated maybe with a lack of understanding or the complexity of actually a boiler system, possibly. So, we did have, we actually had to replace... Weston actually had to reach out to another company to do a lot of the work at the time on the previous boiler. So, that was, I guess, some of the concerns that was, I think, before the person who now owns the company. It was the previous owner, but I think some of the technicalities, as far as the larger systems, I, obviously, become more complex, and I just don't know how versed they are in those mechanicals dealing with the size of buildings that we have necessarily. And maybe that's the reason why some of the pricing is so much different, too, I can only assume. But those were the concerns. So, yeah, we had to spend whatever for the new boiler.
Have these concerns been brought up to them?
Yeah, we've talked about it a little bit, too, and they've responded back and basically just understanding our frustration. So, and again, I think that they're, in my opinion, since it's their new ownership, I think their service line has expanded to where they're doing more complex work, you know, as complicated as what maybe designing or building a system that we have in City Hall. Not sure, but they have been, you know, coming out and doing the annual maintenance on it. Babe Man Park, it has a couple boilers out there, because that's how HVAC is. That's how those units are operated and ran, and they built that system as well. So, so, I think it's getting better, in my opinion, but...
Yeah, I would say, you know, with the fire station, we had the new boiler system in when this was built. Because we got the heat from the other end, we've had no issues with them in the last two years. So, I, you know, they really improved their, since they changed ownership.
Okay. I think it's probably good that we're only a one-year agreement, too, that we'd have time to look at if there is issues yet, as long as they're being brought up to them and everything and concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. They reacted. It wasn't timely regarding the issue that you had, but they did react to it. They were made aware of it.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion, or would you like to see something else, or...
I'll make a motion to extend the one-year contract to Weston Mechanical.
Okay, we have a motion to extend the one-year contract. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
I would just add that I think we should know this stuff more timely before the contract comes up. So, if there's an issue, we need to start looking at different avenues more in advance. That's one thing I would ask.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Motion passed for the one-year contract with Western Mechanical for the annual maintenance HVAC. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding proposed intergovernmental agreement by and between New Orleans County and the City of Elkhorn concerning county-owned property in the City of Elkhorn, tax key parcel YUNW zero-zero-two-five-four. Everybody had that in their packet and was talked about? Any questions or discussion, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the intergovernmental agreement between New Orleans County and the City of Elkhorn. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson, Jr.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Motion passed for the proposed agreement. And we have discussion and possible decision regarding revising the treasurer's job description and... and advertising for the position. This was brought up in HR committee, and Adam kind of worked on what you guys talked about.
I guess I'd just like to ask the people that were involved, some that are hiding way back there. You guys review this as well, and everybody's on board with Lacy?
I didn't really review it.
And, I forgot. Stephanie, I was going to say Stephanie. Stephanie, did you review it, too?
I did, yeah, and I suggested changes to Adam that we had addressed, too.
Those are incorporated?
Yes.
Okay. Cory?
Yes.
Okay, Adam?
Yes, we're so.
Just want to make sure we cover all our bases, that's all.
Any other questions or discussion?
I guess I would just say, you know, there aren't really any, I wouldn't say the changes were really significant. Some of them were more just formatting, you know, some of the prior job description, some things were sort of just listed in a string of semicolons and not really listed out in bullet point. And so we just sort of more fully developed some of the items and duties that were previously kind of just lumped together. And then did out a few things that we talked about, maybe transferring to free up some more time for Stephanie to maybe help with some other things. But I wouldn't say there's a real substantial difference in the duties. So just try to be as clear as possible, so we all understand what, you know, what the responsibilities are. And there is some overlap between these duties and, let's say, the finance director, just to provide some backup. So, you know, some of them, some of the duties talk about assisting with, you know, maintaining debt service records, et cetera. So we do want to have some backup in case, you know, something happens and someone's unavailable. So we don't want just one person to know what's going on, so. And just for clarity, too, I, you know, the one thing that came up, too, is in terms of who the treasurer should report to. It previously been the city administrator. We talked about maybe changing that to the finance director. And getting feedback from our legal counsel from Joe over, the personnel legal counsel, her recommendation was to keep it with the city administrator, because she said it is a statutory position, which ultimately is appointed by the mayor. So they thought, she thought it made more sense to have it reporting to me. So that, you know, darn any changes with that. But in case you're just wondering about that, why it is what it is, so.
I'd make a motion to approve.
And to advertise?
And advertise.
We have a motion to approve the revising the job description and advertising for the position. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for revising the job description and advertising for the position currently. Next, we are going to adjourn into closed session, and we will reconvene into open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will go into closed session. Okay, we are back into open session. We do have the offer to purchase city parcels with tax key numbers, YA 387800001 and YA 39690001.
I'd like to make a motion to decline those offers.
We have a motion to decline the offers of purchase, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to decline. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Ken Mynell?
Yes.
Tim Sharoda?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Motion passed to decline the offers of purchase, those two tax key parcels. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.